Okay, it's one o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started and call to order. It's December 1st, 2025, 1:00 p.m. This is a Flagler County Board of County Commissioners Workshop. If you'll stand for the pledge to the flag. Now we'll take a moment of silence. This moment of silence is to recognize our first responders and those who serve in armed forces and protect us. Okay, now we're going to move on. We're going to start with the Center for Urban Transportation Research Transit Development Plan Presentation. Good afternoon, gentlemen. If you'll step up here and state your name into the microphone, appreciate it.
Good afternoon. Trevor Martin, Transit Manager. As many of you may know, Flagler County Public Transportation is undergoing our Transit Development Plan Update. We've enlisted the assistance of the experts at Cudar, the Center for Urban Transportation Research, and we just have a small introductory presentation. Some of you may have seen already, but for the whole board's pleasure, I'll hand it over to Mr. Jonathan Roberson, the Project Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. I'm Jonathan Roberson, Project Manager from the University of South Florida's Center for Urban Transportation Research. And we're going to talk a little bit about the Flagler County 2026 to 2035 Transit Development Plan. Today, we'll go over some introduction on what is a TDP, some highlights on the current Flagler County Public Transportation Services, existing and projected conditions in the county that may impact public transportation, project schedule, some upcoming activities, and some discussion, I hope, on what you think about the plan and the situation. So what is a TDP? A Transit Development Plan, Flagler County is a designated public transportation provider, and you're required by the state to develop a TDP every five years. The TDP examines current and projected transportation and mobility needs for a 10-year timeframe. It meets the FDOT requirements so the county can receive annual operating funding for existing services. It builds on your existing plans in the community, both transportation and comprehensive plans. It provides you as leaders with a strategic plan. It identifies and prioritizes public transportation improvements for Flagler County, and has a highlighted by a financial plan that is both cost-constrained and unconstrained. And overall, it's a public engagement process, and we get to hear from you and all of your constituents about what they may need or lack with public transportation. You all help make the plan. I won't go over all of this in detail, but a TDP has five required components, a public involvement process, coordination with the Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization, Volusia Flagler, taking a look at the operating context, what does the county look like now, or what will it look like in 10 years, taking a look at the land use and corridors in the county now and also in 10 years, and how that may impact, how that growth really might impact public transportation, and again, wrapping it up in a 10-year prioritized plan that's actionable. There have been previous transit development plans and other plans that are related to this effort, including previous Flagler County TDPs from the last three years, the recently adopted Transportation Disadvantaged Service Plan, the MPO's Long Range 2050 Plan, which was adopted in September, and this is just any really of the local comprehensive plans in Flagler County really matter, and I'm just highlighting here Flagler, Palm Coast, Bunel, Flagler Beach. So these all relate to this plan greatly, and this TDP will build on those. Real quickly, you do have existing public transportation services offered by the county. Currently, Flagler County Public Transportation, FCPT, that's a lot easier to say, so I'm going to...FCPT provides pre-scheduled demand response services that operate door-to-door for those who qualify. These are ADA folks or transportation disadvantaged qualified services. These services focus on the disabled, elderly, low-income, or residents with limited mobility options. FCPT currently has a 27-vehicle fleet that is based here on the government services complex. But one thing that is interesting is FCPT does not currently offer any fixed route or any other type of service for the general public. So that's one thing this plan can look at. The current services FCPT provides, they operate under their role as a community transportation coordinator with the Florida Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged. This is a partnership with the CTD and with the Northeast Florida Regional Council, and this is governed by the local coordinating board through the Northeast Florida Regional Council. As a CTC, Flagler County is tasked with coordinating with all other service providers in the county and provides these paratransit and ADA trips under this umbrella and receives funding under this umbrella. And Flagler County is also looking at expanding their funding eligibility for additional federal 5307 funding in relation to this. And real quickly, additional highlights, common trip purposes of the current FCPT systems include medical, employment, education, training, daycare, and quality-of-life trips. When we looked at this three years ago, you can see on this map, it's a little small, but where the trips, origins and destinations were most clustered, kind of from, you know, the I-95 corridor, Bunel, Palm Coast, and so on, and some of the coastal area. And so ridership for the current system is now rebounding back toward pre-pandemic levels, about 90,000 last year trips. So overall, looking at that, in this TDP effort, we'll be looking at the existing and projected conditions in the county for the next 10 years. Where is the population growth occurring? Where or how much are the transportation-dependent populations, under 18, over 65, zero-car households, households over the poverty rate projected to grow? Where is the jobs now, and where are they expected to be in 10 years, and associated land use and development, and residential and employment growth? And most of all, can we take a look at, would people ride any new kind of public transportation service if offered? And you probably know this, but your population continues to grow. We've looked at the 2025 estimates from the state of Florida, and it's now at 140,000, which what we could tell was almost a 47% increase since the 2010 census, and it's expected to be over 200,000 in the county by 2050. So you're a growing county, like many in Florida. You also have a growing population of folks that are over 65, and you can see where they're clustered now. And you have transit-dependent populations, folks under 18 and below the poverty rate in various parts of the county, which might expand transportation demand in other areas. And from the MPO's 2050 Plan, you're a, this is a county that's growing economically. The service sector remains the most dominant sector, but employment in the commercial and industrial sectors, although smaller, is expected to double by 2050, and your dominant areas of tourism, retail trade, healthcare, and so on, will continue to grow. So as you grow, both in population and employment, what mobility options will be available for folks now and in the next 10 years? Previous TDPs identified there might be some need for additional type of public transportation services in the Palm Coast, Moody Corridor area, Bunel, Flagler Beach, including some fixed routes on the main corridors, and maybe some deviated fixed route that circulated in and around these areas, and some enhanced bus stops and a transfer center. And I won't go over all this, but there's been some previous plans that I mentioned before that have outlined the need and the support for more public transportation, including from the local comprehensive plans of the county, Palm Coast, and so on. So what's unique about Flagler County? You have a service area that's both urban and rural, and you also have regional connections to St. John's and Volusia Counties. You have key trip generators in existence now in Bunel, and the Moody Corridor, Palm Coast, coastal areas, and nearby counties. But you also have a large rural area. You're also characterized by kind of checking all the boxes of an area that might need some more public transportation, your population's growing, job growth is on the rise, and so on. When we look at other communities across Florida and in the country of this size and of this type of growth, there are three types of transit services that can be successful in this geography, some kind of local bus service along main corridors, and expansion of the existing system, maybe to operate more in the evenings and the weekends, and some kind of flexible services that operate in areas where just a fixed line may not work. This is very common in a lot of areas now, and this, I won't go over all of this, but this kind of gives you a table of what that looks like for a community like Flagler County. The services to the left in the red are...
Could you go back to that last slide, please? So would you explain the 30 to 60-minute service and the 60-minute service? Does that mean you can get wherever you want to get to in 60 minutes? Is that what that means?
It would mean a bus every 30 or 60 minutes. Trip time would hopefully be 60 minutes or less is a typical margin. But this pyramid also show how the, depending on your size of households and employment, that there's the right tools of transportation for the job. We're not talking about rail, for example. Yeah, you bet. And this chart kind of shows the spectrum of the public transportation services that might work. Over to the left, the fixed route, the deviated fixed route, the paratransit, and that flexible microtransit service in the middle is what we're seeing in a lot more communities, especially with a geography like a small urban and rural mix of Flagler. And some folks mix in, some counties and cities mix in the TNCs like Uber or Lyft with that microtransit service. And so this kind of gives an idea of maybe the range that might work with Flagler County's geography. The pictured up to the left of the van is an on-demand service that they do in zones in Sarasota County. The app in the middle is from Bay County, Panama City, where they take hotel workers out to the beach area from the more populated areas for jobs, and that's a successful type of flexible service for folks. And that's a small fixed route bus to the right in Hernando County. So this overall schedule is for this plan, this is the first phase of public outreach. We're expected to go through April and come back to you with some alternatives and what the public has been saying. Some of these activities, again, the public presentations, we currently have an online survey live, asking anybody in Flagler County what their thoughts are on current services and if they'd like to see more. We're interviewing key community stakeholders. All of you were contacted by our team for an interview. If you have time, we would appreciate it, and we know it's hard to get the time. But other institutions such as the school board, the chamber, the DOT, the neighboring transportation site in Volusia County and so on, we hope to interview. We are going to wrap up looking at the existing and projected conditions and come back to you with those and the corridors that come to mind, and hopefully have a couple of public workshops early next year to go over some of the alternatives and things we've been hearing. So I've talked a lot, but I did talk about the online survey. This is open until December 12th, and these are some of the questions it focuses on. We really want to know what people think, leaders, the public, everybody. What do you think? What aspects of the current services offered by the county are working best in the community? What are the top challenges you see for public transportation to be successful in Flagler County? What are the three top improvements you'd like to see implemented? What can the county do better? Also, not in the survey, but related to in-person meetings, is there any other meetings or community events you recommend we go to, to reach out to folks? And this is the link and the QR code for the active survey. This has been launched on the county social media sites and most of the municipal sites as well. So as of today, we have 402 surveys filled out, which is a great number, and so we'll put that all together and come back to you next time with what, summarizing what we've heard from folks. But it does relate to these above questions, and I would love to hear if you all have any questions on this presentation. I know there's a lot of detail in this presentation, so I hope you see some of the details as something that can be looked at later as well.
I have a quick question. I was at the meeting, and I want to thank you for your presentation and your work. I know you've been working diligently on this program. You had said something about, is it Tia that was supposed to contact me, Boyd?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure it shows up.
She's from our team, yes.
Yeah, okay, I want to make sure. I will get back to her then. I didn't know if it was, you know, spam or not, because it came out that way.
It would be a Teams meeting if there's time, and we'd send the questions beforehand so you get an idea.
Okay, thank you.
The issue that, the last time we did this, which is still a problem, I think, and that's the first mile and the last mile of any transportation system, and that's going to take, I don't know how you solve that. Well, they couldn't solve it last time. So, but that's the kind of the thing, the elephant in the room, if you will, is the first mile and the last mile. So you can do the straight up and down corridors, but how do they get to the bus stop? And how do they get home from the bus stop?
Yes, it's a common problem.
Yeah, it is for us, because the city wasn't laid out, or the county wasn't laid out for bus transportation, it just wasn't. So, I mean, you've got a challenge in front of you, but that's the first thing you're going to have to deal with. How are they going to get to the bus? You can do all the bus routes you want, but how are they going to get to the bus?
Yeah.
And then how are they going to get home from the bus?
Every public transportation user starts out as a pedestrian, so that has to be kept in mind. The plan, we'll take a look at all the current job clusters and activity clusters and the projected ones. We know Bunel's going to be adding a lot of housing, but are the services going to be there, sidewalks and other support? But we will take a look at the biggest trip generators and try to see if there's some kind of zones or routes or combo that could at least get the most ridership, and try to give you a picture in the next presentation of maybe the highest ridership potential and then other needs. But I agree, it is tricky, but you're not alone. There's a lot of counties in Florida laid out this way that are growing. I think the trick is to maybe identify the right tool for the job, and that might do the best initially. And a lot of communities pilot projects and ideas, and the state does support some of those in grants, so you can test things and see if they work as well. So we would come back to you with all those ideas and possibilities. Thanks.
Turn that on. I just, I had a great interview. I thought the interview process went really well. Appreciate, Trevor, some of the input, you know, some of the questions I get was about lack of drivers or, you know, the routes, but we've, apparently we've solved that, and so, you know, a lot of good information back and forth, so I think everybody needs to get on those interviews and get those done. It's a good process.
Thank you.
I am sort of thrilled that over 400 people have already responded. I'm thrilled to hear that. That's a great opportunity.
Yes, we'll come back to you with those results kind of summarized. That really helps inform, you know, this isn't prescriptive, this is also what people are saying they need. And they're able to identify where they need the service potentially in a given day, and that's helpful too, in forming some...
And that will go on until when?
That's open until December 12th.
So there's 11 days left.
Yes, yeah, but that's a great return for a survey that's been out for a few weeks now.
Fantastic.
Greg, we'll get a chuckle out of this, but you talked about the first and last mile. One of the things we talked about was the accommodations on newer buses for, imagine this, e-bikes and other things, so it cuts down on that time for people getting to the buses, and it's interesting how things have evolved.
We've seen bike racks, you see that a lot on buses, yeah.
Some transit sites allow the e-bikes on the bus or just the battery, you can have bike racks, but as you may have also seen, some people seem to be ordering their children electric dirt bikes that they think are e-scooters, so the agency will have to have a good policy for the type of bike and the storage of it. But yeah, it is a great first mile, last mile tool for people. Sidewalks help too.
Just an off-the-cuff, kind of a newbie to all this, so just bear with me. Is public transportation a state mandate, or is it a state service that you bring to all the different municipalities?
It's not a mandate, but if you, real generally, the majority of public transportation services are funded by the state and federal government. So local government is typically steps in to operate it and kind of plan it and manage it. So that's, this is a process that helps keep the county up to date with the state requirements, but there are also federal requirements they follow as they receive some federal funding. So in some communities, it's a regional body that does this, in others, it's a city or a county or a nonprofit in some cases, but usually a public, in Florida, usually a county or a very large city managed the transit, if that helps.
Yep, thank you.
So the microtransit, the mod service, is that an app ran by the county, or is that like, explain the microtransit, I guess, where is that where they take an Uber to their final destination or from the fixed route system?
What we've seen in mobility-on-demand services, you can select from, the public entities select from a menu, usually of, it's either an app that a third party brings in that allows the trip planning, the ticket buying, the wait time, everything to be on an app so the county can do this two-key, turnkey, and not worry basically about the technology. Other folks do not only the technology and the trip planning, but also the operations. So a third-party vendor is hired to bring in the technology, but also the drivers, and in some cases, all three, the technology, the drivers, and the vehicles. Some of these you're seeing here, I believe Bay County, they use their own vehicles and drivers, but the third party is completely the app, which there was really no conceivable way many public entities can design these apps. So they enter in some kind of operational contracts with the third-party vendor. A company like Via or RATP Dev are just come to mind. In St., in Pinellas County, they partner with Uber for after-hour trips. People can take Uber and get a discount, that's the same amount as the fare when transit isn't working. But if, most agencies find it easier to lean on the expertise of a third-party vendor, and that also helps for some counties not to have to worry about growing the public, the county government, that's the interest in some areas. So it's a mix, which we can provide to you kind of a matrix and a summary of what other places are doing. But Hernando County, for example, to the right, they have on-demand transit service and the smaller bus here. Their operations is completely contracted out and the technology. They have five or six people on administrative staff, the rest of it is third-party. With Sarasota, to the left, it's a mix. It's the technology and the vehicles are the vendor, but, I'm sorry, this whole service is, I believe, contracted out. So it does vary, and I think each community kind of comes to what their priorities are and what their service goals are, and sometimes a third-party vendor can deliver that best. We see that all the time. Does that help?
Yeah, no, it does, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Robinson? Is there any takeaway for us that you need from us?
No, but please feel free to reach out to me or Trevor or Tia on any of this. We're trying to post everything that's recent to the project on the county webpage, and the county staff has just been fabulous helping us get all this information up there, and please let us, please reach out. There's no, we're just beginning, and we hope to come back to you soon with more of what we found.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item number five, economic vitality, the Blue Ribbon Committee Discussion. Hello. Nice to see you, sir.
Nice to see all of you. Thank you for joining me this evening, this afternoon. We're going to go over a little bit of economic vitality. Let me adjust this mic a little bit. That better? All right. To make sure we're all on the same board, we went back to the basic definition of economic development to make sure we all have a clear understanding. Economic development is defined as a program, group of policies or set of activities that seek to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for a community by creating and/or retaining jobs that facilitate growth and provide a stable tax base. I know that definition's kind of clear as mud, so on the key takeaways of this, economic development is live, learn, work, and play. And this is accomplished through the three points here, that is job creation, where we focus on bringing in jobs that pay in higher median income than we currently are to make sure we support the stable tax base. than we currently are to make sure we support the stable tax base. Job retention, where we focus on the current businesses that are in a community. But we also find out who their customers are or who they're buying supplies from and try to recruit those companies to our area. That way, we can keep the dollar in our community. And we also do this by the quality of life. We focus on recreational amenities, safety. As you also focus on transportation, that falls in this area as well as education and quality. One thing to keep to remember is economic development, everybody's business. Not one person lands a company. So, you're going to have to have the community involved. Just by the local residents going to a restaurant, when you bring a company in to see the community, they're able to see all these residents on a Tuesday night having dinner and their families together and they can envision that. So, that's why it's so important to remember. Economic development is everybody's business. So, we're going to focus here on the local government. And the government cannot create jobs, but government can create the conditions for job creation. How that is done, an example is the local government has taxing zoning that can provide infrastructure, support commercial revitalization and promote small business development. Two of the items we're currently doing is in Flagler County is the REV Capture and Enhancement Grant, the REV Grant, and also the IDA Program. So, thank you for that, bringing those to initiative in to keep and help support economic development. And the key takeaways from this is the government creates the conditions and policies for job growth. And some of the key highlights to take in is Flagler County, the area that's right there next to the airport was participating in the Florida First Sites Program. And by participating in that program, and you see on the second point, is they received a grant. So, now we have a grant that covers the cost of a consultant to help find funds to make sure we have the site, site ready to land a company there. And also, we currently have our IDA Program, which is now registered with the state and we're ready to receive applications. So, in the next steps in my area, we're going to look at over the next 120 days to develop a SWOT analysis to see where Flagler is to answer the question, are we prepared for successful economic development?
So, we're going to go over kind of the accomplishments that we've done over the past year. And since Tuanz knew, I didn't feel that, you know, maybe it was something he was going to cover today. He is scheduled to come back to you, I believe, after the first of the year to kind of go over that SWOT analysis and go over some of the information that he's been able to find. So, I'll take over now and we'll just talk about the accomplishments over the past year. When you look at the strategic plan, you all know that it centers around the four key pillars that guide our progress and development. Together, these pillars create that framework for achieving the county's goals and vision. Today, we're going to focus on economic vitality and the progress that we've made over the past year. We extend our thanks and praise to the board for your dedication and leadership. As Tuan mentioned, the IDA and coming up with some of those incentives are new to Flagler County. And so, to the board, we thank you for that. So, looking at the top industries today in Flagler, the number one is tourism. I know we've talked about this before. It's followed by healthcare, retail, educational services and some of those administrative or waste services. Tourism is really the major driver though, which leverages our coastal assets and the natural beauty that you see in Flagler. The healthcare sector is growing. We've got some new medical services and facilities being developed. Retail remains very strong. It supports the local commerce and consumer needs. And then the educational services are expanding, some of the learning opportunities that are here. Moving forward, the county is focused on driving economic vitality through strategic industry development and some of those key industries that we're focusing on, our health and medical, aviation, aerospace, light manufacturing, again, tourism and hospitality, and then the existing business expansion. And as Tuan mentioned with the IDA, I believe we're getting ready, if we haven't already received it, our first application for a local business. We have two that are interested. I believe one actually submitted. So, when we look at the economic development pipeline in Flagler, it's strong. Last year, we had 53 requests for information that came into Flagler. 12 of them were responses that were filled based on the available site or buildings that we had in our community. Three of those resulted in site visits that were conducted by the client. And then at the end of it, we ended up with two successful projects that were secured in Flagler within the city of Palm Coast. The industries and economic activities are contributing to Flagler's overall growth and prosperity. As I mentioned, we're targeting specific industries. But what we've found over the past year, the people that are reaching out are technology-based, aviation, aerospace. Those are the two top industries that we're inquiring about Flagler. It was followed up by heavy manufacturing or consumer goods and then building materials and supply, and then those businesses that are related to either food, water or produce. So, that's what we're seeing right now. And then the key economic development initiatives that we're focusing on, we're designed to drive that growth and attract investment. We mentioned the IDA Board, which provides growth through tax-exempt bond financing, making expansion of businesses easier. Tuan mentioned that first Florida Sites Program, which they did identify the Flagler Executive Airport as a prime development location. We also updated the, or in the process of updating the Flagler Executive Airport Master Plan. And this is thanks to the board's foresight in moving that forward. Also, the Flagler Eco Discovery Center, which is under design, hopefully soon to be constructed, which will promote sustainable tourism in our region. And then additionally, the new general aviation terminal, which is under construction now at the airport, which will enhance services for private and business aviation, which is another initiative that was driven by our board. Flagler County was ranked number five. It's one of the fastest-growing counties in Florida. It's got projected 21% growth between 2020 and 2035. Based on the Bieber projections, Flagler is projected to reach 172,000 residents by 2030. Last year, we saw 3.5% annual population growth with what's just about, I think, 5,000 residents, new residents calling Flagler home. So, we now have a population of 136,744. To support the current and anticipated growth, we've dedicated 102 million allocated in the fiscal year '26 budget. That's comprised of 20.5 million county, county dollars. And then you've got 81.7 million in grants. And that's being used for critical infrastructure improvements for road, utilities, stormwater, beaches and some capital facility improvements. And these investments will help ensure that we have sustainable development, maintain that high quality of life that our residents expect. Our born, our board has shown exceptional insight and dedication in securing those funds and prioritizing those community needs as we continue to grow. This highlights the Flagler County readiness to attract aerospace investment. And the key elements here include the strategic site development. Flagler County partnered with Global Location Strategies, an FPL, to be included in that Florida First Sites, offering 130 acres of shovel-ready land for aerospace development. And then under workforce development, just making sure that we have that workforce pipeline and development in addition to all of the service members that call Northeast Florida home. We also have partnerships with Daytona State College and Embry-Riddle, where we continue to develop that skilled talent pipeline within this region. And then looking at anticipated economic impact, the strategic readiness of projects are designed to attract significant investment, leading to the creation of high-wage jobs and substantial long-term growth. And I know this is something that Tuan is working on right now with a request through the state. So, hopefully we have good news coming soon. When we started working on this and we were identifying barriers to economic growth, it's not necessarily specific to Flagler County alone. This is based on input from our community partners, but also looking at kind of the trends across many parts of the state of Florida. Flagler County is at a turning point where growth is happening, but we're not reaching our full potential. We're seeing fewer people in the workforce with rising unemployment and that affects every sector, whether it's healthcare to manufacturing. The affordability of housing, it's not just a social issue. It is an economic one because if we don't have places for employees to, workers to live, then businesses can't grow in our community. Infrastructure is the backbone of development. We've made some progress with the creation of the IDA, but we need some private sector support to further advance those initiatives. We're losing potential deals due to a lack of ready land or buildings that are available for some of these companies to move into. But this is a solvable problem with the right partnerships. And then when we continue to look at some of the public resistance to growth, it is real. I think that as government and working with our community partners, we need to communicate a little bit better, build trust around major projects. We do need unified planning. I know this is something that we're working on with the Joint Planning Initiative with the city of Palm Coast and bringing the other cities along. But from an economic standpoint, that fragmentation, it does slow progress. It confuses potential investors. But I think that that is a fixable challenge or a barrier that we have. And then diversification in the economy is essential. We need to broaden that base to build resiliency. Right now, we're really highly dependent on the residential. We need to branch out and bring in some industries here, which kind of leads us to this next slide. There was a recent workshop where a community member had suggested that the county consider creating a consensus to have staff collaborate with the cities. They talked about the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency, which was a model that came out of Leon, Tallahassee. I believe it was Tallahassee had 70% of the population in Leon County. So, many years ago, they investigated and created this Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency as one of the models to address some of the jurisdictional fragmentation issues that we experience here. It's not the only model that's probably out there, but what we were bringing back to you is a potential opportunity that may provide the framework for better coordination and for more effective planning. And so, I really just wanted to end on that, to see if there was consensus to work with the cities on investigating what that Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency would look like. I know that the city of Palm Coast has already talked about this. They've already given consensus to their staff. We're asking our board, is this something that you would like us to work on with the city of Palm Coast? I believe the city of Bunell will be discussing this next, next week at their December 8th meeting. And I don't have a date on city of Flagler Beach when they're going to talk about it. But it's really just getting consensus for staff to work together with the cities to evaluate whether or not this is a framework that would work well in our community. And then to just explore it and report back to the individual boards. Thank you.
Does anyone want to start first? I have some questions. Do you want to go?
I just had a question on, you may not know this. I, the city of Palm Coast, do they not have their own dedicated economic development department?
They do. They've got a gentleman named Craig McKinnon, maybe. I can't remember his last name. So, he's a staff of one and he does have a staff assistant that assists. And even though we have great working relationships with the city as far as our community partners, I think the thrust behind it, or if you look at the reason why the Blueprint Committee was assembled, was to look at the community holistically. And from what I've read online, it appears that it doesn't just tackle economic vitality, that it encompasses all of the needs of the community holistically as kind of like the blueprint of how they function and how resources are used among the whole community.
And so, it's not a bigger, it's not a bigger department than we have. That was kind of my point.
No.
And then in Bunell, do they have a dedicated economic development or is it the city manager?
I believe it's the city manager and he may.
His background, correct?
I'm not sure of his background. I know it's possible, but he probably handles it primarily by himself with maybe some input from staff.
Okay. All right. No, I'm, I'm, I think this is long overdue, so.
I think it's interesting.
Depending upon how much, how many resources, you know, however they form this group. You've got a model to look at, right? With the Tallahassee-Leon group?
We have the Tallahassee-Leon group. And I think that there are other communities that are uniquely situated where you have one prominent city in a county like we have with Palm Coast where they make up 80%. So, we can look at various models. It's really just to gather consensus from the board to have us continue to work with our partners.
I'm okay with that.
I'm not against this, but I have some concerns. When we talk about people that are in our, our smaller cities, the island, the Bay Area, island people, we haven't had a consensus at the beginning, a year ago, just on the beach project, the beginning, everybody was, no, 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 yes, no, no, yes. We haven't had cohesiveness, which with this type of a thing, if we don't have all the partners in, then it's again a divided county overall. For us to partner with the people that are 95% of the population, and I think Bunell would be more interested in getting involved with that because they are beginning to build themselves into a bigger city, you know, more residential city. How do we put some people in and some people out? And I just don't want to hear that we're, we're dividing the county up by population or things like that. And I, I have, I have a fear of that happening. And I'd hate for that to happen. But when you can't even get a hold of somebody from another, you know, jurisdiction, municipality as to whether they're on with us or not on with us on the last two or three items this afternoon, this morning, it concerns me that, that way. Not that I don't want to see this happen because I think we could become very industrialized with the right partners in there. And I think we have the talent now to do it. So, it's just my concern and I'm going to make that known because I haven't seen an agreement on anything 100% yet in my year. So, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Hanson, any comments right now?
I'll add to the, to the consensus. I'm, I'm intrigued to see how we can, then the conversations that we'll have with the city of Palm Coast. You know, I don't know that we can take the exact model, but scaled-down versions of some of the, the better parts of what Tallahassee and Leon have done. And, you know, I just think through this whole Doge thing, we've got to relook at all of our departments. So, you know, if there's, there's efficiencies there, then I think we have to at least explore it.
So, are we, what I, I hear and see, I want to make sure we're not doing or have, at least have a consensus about this. We had talked about putting in the Joint Long Rage Planning Board, which I think would typically be comprised of either like elected officials or a planner. This isn't going to replace that, is it? What our comp plan called for? Because I don't, I don't really want to put citizens in the joint planning because we're talking about annexation and we're talking about how fire and rescue and police work together with each, you know, for development, growth. And I, I want to be careful that we don't set that up. I want the Joint Planning Committee to be separate from whatever this is. This is economic development and that, like, they don't cross into the lines of annexation and long-term growth and development or comp plan. And, and so, I just want to make sure that these are two separate things before I really think about, give a consensus.
It is. And I know Adam's in the back of the room and he's been working with John Zobler at the city of Palm Coast on the joint planning issue. This isn't intended to replace that. I mean, that's still going to move forward and it is. And I believe they're working on some draft documents. This was brought up really from a community member who is very supportive of economic vitality and had wanted us to at least explore how, how it's funded, how it's structured somewhere else. When we did some research on there in looking at how it was created or what they do, they do more than economic vitality, but that's going to be for us to kind of go dive into it, see what they do, come back to the elected boards and say, okay, so how do you see this working? And I know it's a great point that you brought up about, you know, making sure that we're all on the same page. The invitation is out there to anybody who wants to be a part of it. And Palm Coast had kind of already taken the initiative or the lead to say, you know, we- we want to work with you, county, can you, you know, move forward with this? When you look at the, and not trying to discount anybody, but when you look at the makeup of the community and you look at areas of opportunity, just based on size, I mean, you hit on it with Banel, having the landmass that they have and the ability to expand. Not that we want to exclude anybody, but I think it probably, more than likely, the growth that you would see are probably either in unincorporated Palm Coast or City of Banel, just looking at landmass. So I think it's important that we all come together and kind of, you know, just work through this and see if this could even work for our community. And if it does, then great. We just report back to the elected boards and see if there's, you know, a desire to move forward.
Yeah, I just want to make, you know, like be very clear that we have a very defined swim lanes and everybody stays in their lane. You know, I don't want to find out that like the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency is, is getting an annexation and all of that. So I'm okay with going forward just as a consensus to see what it looks like. But it'd be interesting to see the IDA firing off, this is firing off, and Joint Planning Committee firing off. Is everybody staying in their own, in their wheelhouse? Yeah. So it'll be fascinating to see if we can keep everybody focused on their task. I think there's, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Isn't it true that our economic development efforts are already in coordination with Palm Coast?
Yes, they are.
For instance, I mean, we bring somebody in and they, they like, they see a lot in Palm Coast. They like, that's fine, we brought them in, but, but they want to set up in Palm Coast and we're already doing that, right? You're working with Palm Coast, so.
We are, yeah. And so like when you look at the county's role, I mean, we have the primary role with Jack's USA. So because Jack's USA is an organization that doesn't necessarily want to have, you know, every city and every county, they have, you know, a figurehead in each jurisdiction, in this case, Tewan that they work with, rather than, you know, have five different people from the same community. So we work well with them to provide and share the information, the leads, and, you know, work with them to even structure economic incentives where the cities may have their own individual incentives, but then the county can come to the table with theirs. So we do work in partnership with them. This is just bringing it to another level of coordination.
I did have two questions about this slideshow that are a little off topic. One, it might be an Amy question. Are restaurants counted in the tourism cluster or the retail trade? Hi, Amy.
Hi, Amy.
There she comes.
She thought she would just slide right through this.
You were going to be quiet today, huh? Can't let you sit there without having something.
Are restaurants included in tourism clusters or retail trade?
Tourism cluster. Amy Lukasik.
Okay. And then my second question was, in requests for information to responses filled, it goes from 53 to 12, so 41 just kind of fall through a crack. What is that exactly? Like they send a request, but it's not specific?
We didn't meet the minimum qualification. So not all the time, but most of the time, site selectors, companies, they'll first engage with the state, this kind of general flow of how things work. The state then distributes certain parameters that a company's looking for. And we don't necessarily at that, at this stage, get to come back and ask additional questions. They just have, these are the 10 things we want to know that are required, no matter what. So Jack's USA is the arm for the northeast region of Florida. And then they send it out to all of their counties. So when we get the information in, Tewan then passes it out to Palm Coast, Banel, Flagler Beach. If they want to submit a proposal, the request for information. And when we don't reply, it's because we don't meet those parameters. So, and nine times out of 10, it's sites and buildings. It's the infrastructure already there, the zoning, so when-
We look at all the, everything in the county when you come back with what, do we meet it or not? Every municipality?
Oh, yeah.
And I guess going back to my question about are restaurants counted into tourism? Is this standard to count restaurants into tourism? Do you do that by like a NACs number, like a N A C?
N C I S, I think.
N C I S, yeah. So that's typical to put all restaurants into tourism? So that's the standard? Is there, does data come from us or?
The state.
The state, okay, got it. All right, thank you.
I just want to tell you something that you made me think of. So in tourism, you know how we have that tool that's the cell phone data? We're getting ready to kind of go to the next level, which is credit card data. And we're going to be able to see all the restaurants in the community. What percent is here, locals, and what percent comes from elsewhere? And where they're coming from and where else they're spending their money, their whole journey. It's-
It's just a zip code or a, it's not like what they bought? I thought, because I kind of thought the governor stopped tracking by credit card data this past year. Because, you know, that was like a law. I'd have to look more specific into it, but I thought that that was a law passed to keep them from tracking ammunition purchases, all sorts of purchases.
Restricting.
Yeah, because, I mean, a bank can get drilled down to the item you bought, where you bought it. So, and so there was some legislation pushed through to stop that, I thought.
It could be, I can find this out too.
I'm just curious, you brought that up, but I thought that everybody was pulling out of that in Florida because-
There's probably different avenues to get that information, depending if maybe you're, if you opt out or not and how much your cell phone is also connected. If you probably set it up with your credit card, with Apple Pay, things like that, so.
Interesting.
But you brought up restaurants, so it made me-
Yeah, I didn't think, I didn't see restaurants in the tourism bucket. So I just was wondering where that would come from.
Can I, can I ask you? This is a very strange question, but I'm good at that, right? In the superstores, like where you can get clothing, food, and then they have a restaurant area, right, like Sam's or, you know? Does that food count as restaurant food?
No, no.
So it's grocery food rather than restaurant food?
Yeah, it would probably be box, the box retail.
Yet they don't pay a tourist tax on it? There's no additional tourist tax in the restaurants?
Not here, no.
Even though it's counted as tourism? That's interesting. I was in, I was in Tampa and Orlando this year.
Yeah, some of the bigger metropolitan, I know Dade County, they have the food and beverage tax, yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's it. So do you have consensus, I think, just to move forward for now?
Can I stay neutral?
You certainly can. I think there's a consensus outside of that.
I'm just a little neutral, worried about that.
Okay. And if nothing else, we'll move forward to item number six, Flagler County Sheriff's Office signage discussion. Mr. Sherbridge? This is a real simple two-part question, right?
It truly is. Mark Sherbridge, Flagler County Sheriff's Office. The, the policy requires that the board do the final approval on the actual design, which you have before your two design ideas. The first one was submitted, it was more subtle, it's brushed silver. The county administrator said, why don't we just match the colors? So we put together the artist conception of the second sign.
Where is it? Oh, you don't see it.
That's the point of option one, I think. It's in silver, right, or brushed nickel?
And then the other one actually matches the same color of the signage there. Again, the signs, the sign, the letters would be half the size of the actual, a little more subdued. I met with Mike Dixon, the Director of General Services, because the policy also says that later on that they're responsible for maintenance, all that type of stuff. We discussed vendor that we would use and he was happy. Again, no cost to the taxpayers at all on this venture, so. We were good with either one. The silver, the brushed silver matches the larger letters on the wall, a little more subdued, harder to see. That's what we initially did, but the green actually looks a lot better, I think. That's, that's just me.
Should we just start at the end? Do you have any questions or comments or?
I think what you're seeing is that the silver just doesn't, it's better on a darker background.
It is better.
So what you're seeing is just, it's, it doesn't pop the same way as the other one, so.
And we were going for that subtle look initially, so.
Yeah, I don't have any issues.
Question before I give a preference. When Rick Staley is no longer the sheriff, does this name of the building, can he keep the word sheriff in front of his name?
Absolutely, that's a professional title.
Okay, that's fine. That was a question. Okay, thank you. And I prefer the dark green.
I think what does change is the monument signed by the road. That changes with each sheriff.
With each sheriff. And that was designed that way initially in the initial design. So when it changes out front, so it'll have the new sheriff's name, whoever that may be, in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Which doesn't have to be moved now that the stop sign's been moved.
That's correct. And it is so much safer.
Really scary.
Thank you.
Mark, can you, can you explain where it's going to be put? I don't get it.
Right there, where's there?
Is it under the O to the left?
Yeah, it's under the-
There it is, if you look at the-
Oh, you're talking about that big long thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, never mind.
Okay.
Do you have a color preference?
Right now it's white on green, on green on white.
Right. Or the bottom one.
Silver on white.
Silver and white.
Look above.
I'm lost, sorry. I can find the building, I just can't find the sign.
Green or silver?
It's lettering, it's not a sign.
I think, I think the green stays a little bit more prominent than the silver, so. That's just me.
Green.
Green.
Okay, if we have consensus, then we'll move forward with that and it's taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, sir.
All right, before we go out to public comment, are there any other items for discussion? Mr. Dance? Ms. Carney? Mr. Hanson?
Well, just something that was brought up in the meeting this morning about the pump, pump sites. I don't know if everybody rogered for that. But currently, when we have overflows at Bay Drive, Lake, Malacopa Canal, and, and the gated community just north of there, we bring in big old pumps and pump to the ocean. And I think what the gentleman, Mr. Davis, wanted to think about, that's all I'm bringing it up for, so we think about it, is that in the future, we should probably have permanent pump stations because the compound flooding issue is not a joke. I mean, that's what happens and we know we have to bring in those big pumps. So if the pumps were, and it's probably just those three places, maybe just-
Yeah, it's not an issue anywhere else. I think it's just a Barrier Island issue.
Yeah, and it, it makes such a difference if you pump that water back to the ocean. It doesn't make sense if you think about, you take all this water and you put it back in the ocean? Yeah, but it works.
What does a permanent look like? Like a structure? Just a little block house with the-
Cinder block house.
Do we have a cost?
They're not very pretty.
Do we have an idea what cost would be on something?
I, I don't have any idea what a cost would be on that. I don't know.
Problem is, if you ask New Orleans about pumps and Levis and stuff, when you need them, they don't start.
We had staff take a look at what he had submitted as a proposal. And initially, it called for mobile trucks that would be sent out post-storm and that over time, we would probably look to develop pump stations.
Pump stations, yeah. Just something to think about.
Palm Coast has a mobile truck, I think, because they have to go over to the B section. Yeah, okay.
That's working so far.
A good resiliency grant opportunity, I would think.
This is probably like a good ask.
But it's something we should, you know, because we're doing it now. We're pumping when it gets bad, we pump, so. Okay, just want to bring it up, that's all. Thanks.
Hardly anyone here from the public, but I'll go ahead and go to public comment. This is a 30-minute time period allocated for public comment. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to address our commission. Anyone like to approach the podium? Yes, ma'am. If you could just pull the microphone towards you and state your name for the record.
My name is Kathleen Duffy. And I'm here because of the cuts to the public library, the Flagler Public Library. I wanted to bring to your attention that there was a study in Florida that found that for every $1 invested from all sources, public libraries returned $6.54 to the economy. Another analysis estimated a return of $5 in services for every tax dollar spent on a national level. Libraries are an economic anchor and you're all interested in economics. It supports real estate values. So those companies that you're trying to attract with what I've heard here today, your reduction in library services will affect some of those decisions. There is a correlation between a distance from a library to house prices. Proximity to a library is associated with higher home values. Right now, the cost of an average hardback book is between $38 and $45. Paperbacks are approximately 25, magazine subscriptions are $18 an issue. Libraries buy in bulk from jobbers and they save substantial costs and they provide cer, the resources they provide are reusable. I want social security. I'm recently widowed. The money that I spent on books and subscriptions is gone. I now get, I dropped cable. I now get Netflix on my television. I get, I canceled all magazine subscriptions and I only have two apps that I have a subscription for. I had to get rid of all of that stuff. I'm not the only senior in this position. If it wasn't for the library, I would not have made it through COVID. The person that was helping take care of my husband caught COVID themselves and they passed away. And I was stuck with someone with Parkinson's and an amputation. The only thing that made me survive was the county library. I would put my holds online and I would drive down there and they would bring them out to a cable and I'd run up and grab them. As far as the county goes, you made a cultural commission. We don't have a whole lot of culture here in this county. I spend most of my cultural money in St. Augustine. That's where I eat dinner, that's where I go to plays, that's where I go to galleries. When I go to a concert, 95% of the time, it's in St. Augustine. We have two theater groups. We have the Historical Society and we have the library. So you're not funding it at the recommended mill rate and you've taken our director to write your own grants. And now you've cut entire days where the services are available. I have one other thing. I have two documents I'm going to send to each and every one of you on how public libraries drive economic vitality in surrounding communities and the return to public library investment.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. We, our new library opens up, what, Thursday, Friday? And I think we should have coverage between both libraries. When one is closed, the other should be open or relatively open. But it's just for this year as we look to see the usage at the new library to see if-
I was excited about the new library until it affected my ability to access my library. I'm on dialysis. I only have three days a week to fit my whole life in and now I can't go there on one of my days.
I'll talk to you after this meeting and we'll see what we can do. Thank you. Anything else to talk about today?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I mean, I sympathize, understand your specific situation, but a lot of the points you did talk to- talk to are directly related to the brand-new library location, which was desperately needed in the county. It's on the southern end of the county, so it affects and puts a lot more homes in proximity to the location that you mentioned, and all the issues about economic development. So overall, hours of library usage have been expanded by the addition of the new library. It has affected the existing library, but overall, library hours are extended beyond what they used to be, and it'll be open seven days a week, which we didn't have before. So between the two locations, it's now seven days a week that it'll be open. So it's, it's expanded, restricted to some areas in the northern half because of the existing library, but overall, the, the new library has expanded opportunities and increased many of the things you specifically talked about. But I, and, and we will be reevaluating it so that there may be more hours open in the northern library once we see where people are using the libraries, which, which location is getting the most used, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we are all in agreement.
I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Adjourn.